All right, good evening and welcome to Heartland Township. This is the Planning Commission of Thursday, January 12th, 2017. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Keith, would you take role, please?
Sure. Chairman Fox?
Here.
Jeff Newsom?
Here.
Jim Philaney?
Here.
Sue Grissom?
Here.
Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Tom Murphy?
Here.
All right, thank you, Keith. Next up, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Grissom. Second from Commissioner Philaney. There any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose and a motion carries. Next up, item five, approval of our meeting minutes.
So moved. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Murphy. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. No. Motion carries. Next up is item six, call to the public. We have two of them this evening. We have the one right now, and then we'll have one at the end of the meeting. If there's anyone here who would like to have a word or say anything to the Planning Commission in regards to anything on the agenda or not on the agenda, now would be your time or at the end of the meeting. Anyone? Close call to the public. We have no public hearing this evening, so we'll move right on to item 8A, site plan application number 544, request to construct a 64,600 square foot theater and site plan application 439-A, Imagine Theater, request to amend the PD agreement and the pattern book for the Imagine Theater. So Troy, would you like to introduce the project to us?
Yeah, I'll give a brief overview of the project. First, let me try to give a little bit of a background on where this property is located. This is a zoning map of Heartland Township. And right here in the, somewhat in the central is Highway 23, and then going east and west is Highway 59 here. This is the general area right here, almost by that 21, where this project is. I have an aerial of that area, so you can again see 23 going north and south, and then 59. And then this would be where Meyer is. And then the area we're looking at is going to be in this center area. You can see it's bound by roadway on all sides. This is the general area where we're looking at. This entire development is part of an existing planned development, and that planned development was originally approved in 2008. And this is a site plan from that approval for that same area. So this is what was approved by the township in 2008. This is the concept plan, if you will. It was more than a concept plan, really, but this is the site plan that was approved as part of the planned development, and this is the general layout of that. What they are proposing to do now is change this. The theater will be located in this general area. I've got a site plan of that entire development with the theater as shown. I'll zoom in on just that area that we're looking at. Again, you can see the center area surrounded by roadway. This is the proposed theater. They're not going to occupy this entire island, if I can call it that. They're proposing to split off about a seven and a half acre piece, and then the remainder piece would be developed with some other users. Those have not been determined yet, so this is just a general layout of what they anticipate might be in that area. The focus of tonight's meeting is going to be on this theater here. And I have a general site plan. I think I want to go to... So this is how that theater is laid out generally. The front of it will face to the north, so the back of the building actually kind of faces to the south, the parking lot is primarily on the north side and then on the west side, although there's some in the rear. I want to show a little general view of the, what the building might, is proposed to look So this gives you an understanding of the front facade of that theater building right here. So that's, this project is part of the planned development that was approved in 2008. It has been amended five times. You have, I've outlined the history of that in the staff report. They're now proposing as a site plan to construct this theater. That site plan requires approval from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has the ability to grant some waivers on certain parts of it. They're also proposing to amend the PD agreement, which sets the standards that apply to the PD. They're requesting to amend the PD for signs. And there's an additional part of that amendment which pertains to essentially who can amend the PD in the future. That had been sent to our attorney. Our attorney was working on it. I just hand it out to you tonight. Basically, the attorney is okay with the language of that PD amendment, and it's been somewhat changed from what you had in your packet. So you have set on your tables tonight the language that's been accepted, if you will, by the township attorney. The PD amendment part of it requires a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and then ultimately the Township Board will make the final decision on the amendment part of the PD. So with that as a general background on the history of the project and a general overview of the current project and a little bit of the process, I'll leave it up for any questions and further discussion for later.
All right. Thank you, Troy. I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and introduce yourselves. Anybody would like to?
Good evening. It's been a long time.
It has been.
I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for granting us time this evening. My name is Ed Ikhoff, and I'm with Ramco Gersson. We are the developers of the Heartland Town Square. And as Troy mentioned, we started this project back in 2008 when times were a lot better. They're better again now, but we certainly went through a period of time known as the Great Recession, where things didn't go quite as quickly as we had hoped. But we're very pleased to be here tonight to support Imagine in their application to become a part of the Heartland Town Square development. And we appreciate the work that the staff has done with us, making, you know, tonight's presentation much easier. And we always appreciate the cooperation that we've had with Heartland Township in trying to bring this project to fruition. So we do have with us tonight Michael Southern from Signature and Associates, representing Imagine Theater. And from Ramco Gersson, we also have Ross Gallantine and David Darling. And then also with Michael, we have Filino Pascal and Leslie Zawada, the landscape architect and the engineer, for additional questions that may come up. So at this point, Michael, I'll turn the mic over to you.
Thank you. I'm Michael Southern, and I'm very pleased to be here on behalf of Imagine. I've had the privilege of representing them and doing their work for some 15 or 16 years now, and have been involved in most of their new theaters. This one has been sort of a special project for me because this is what Imagine is going to call their new prototype, new build prototype. This theater is about 64,000 square feet, has 10 screens, and approximately 1,300 seats, all of which are going to be power recliners. So the interior will have a kind of a very upscale feel to it. It's not your, it's not our father's movie theater, let's put it that way. In fact, we've heard people say that our new theaters, when you enter them, it's more like entering the lobby of an upscale hotel. So along with that, the, we'll also have a bar and lounge area with the gas fireplace and some nice soft seating, some traditional theater concessions, but also some upscale food items as well, including the brick oven pizza and things of that nature that can be made with that, all kind of on the fresh foods angle in hot foods. So this is what we would kind of term a kind of a quantum leap in the evolution of movie theaters. And Imagine has established itself as a leader in luxury movie theaters. Currently, Imagine just opened its 10th location in Frankfurt, Illinois, and was a conversion of a 75,000 square foot former Dominix grocery store into a 10-screen luxury theater. Most of the theaters these days in the Imagine chain have been converted or in the process of converting to recliners. That's true also of the Novi Theater, Imagine Novi not too far away from here. And so this is kind of a trend-setting practice on the part of Imagine. They've been on the cutting edge of many firsts in the movie business, including being the first chain in the world to go 100% digital projection in all their theaters. So, and first to be able to sell movie tickets and purchase them on your phone. So there's been many firsts that they've been leaders in, and this is another one of those firsts. This theater, the design, I think you'll agree, is very different than most of what we're used to seeing. I would, I'm happy to say I played an integral role in shaping the design of the theater, but this area, you know, kind of hearkens back to some of the more traditional theater marquises of days before, but with a much more contemporary feel. This will also, this will have the ENAX auditorium, which is a large format auditorium with Dolby Atmos sound system, which is in excess of $100,000 add. And that will be, you know, a large screen and probably seat about 130, 140 people, again all in the recliner format. And one of the other special considerations for this site was that we've got a unique site situation. We've got about 1,600 lineal feet of frontage on three roads. It's unique in any of the real estate developments that I've been involved in. So the front door of the theater actually faces the parking lot, which is great, except that we have all this frontage that we need to address with some nice landscaping and so forth, which we've endeavored to do. But it is, you know, quite a task to cover that the way we'd like to. So I don't know if we can pull that plan up, Troy?
You want the landscape plan?
Yeah. Let's take a look at that. Okay. This is an area in here that was previously landscaped by the Ramco folks. There's some nice landscaping and trees in there that have had a few years to mature. Same thing down here with some pine trees. Unfortunately, some of this has to be eliminated during the construction for the new site plan, and it's well down this corner, but we originally had 10 parking spaces in here, and it was, we were asked by the planning staff to see if we couldn't eliminate those spaces and provide some more, retain those trees. And so we've done that. The one proviso is that if we do run into some parking issues, that we might, we want to reserve the ability to, you know, reintroduce those 10 spaces again, or if we lose the trees in the construction process. But wherever possible in here, we're going to try to salvage and replant the landscaping. So as you can see, this is the 1,600 lineal feet that I was referring to. It's almost a third of a mile. So we've asked for some consideration on how we approach that in terms of the intensity of some of our landscaping items, like shrubs in particular. We've put in quite a few extra trees, but we are, we'd like to have some relief in a couple of those areas. But I think by and large, we're pretty much on target except for the shrubs. And so in noting that, I also want to kind of circle back. If we could look at the elevations again, please, Troy? Sorry to bounce around a little bit, but I wanted to talk about the materials in the building and the, another unique situation is that we have a building that we're, instead of having just a front, some sides, and a rear where you would put the dumpsters and deliveries and everything else that nobody really overlooks at, we've really got three, we have four frontages altogether. So one of our challenges has been to create a building and utilize materials that give the high-quality look all the way around without creating a sense of this is the back door, and we lost interest in that and didn't make it very nice. So as you can see, this is our front, it faces the parking lot. This is the rear of the building, which faces the, kind of the corner of Heartland Square Road and Heartland Road where they come in from M-59. So as you, as you drive into the, from M-59, you would come in, and this would be what you would see first. Right now, there's going to be, will be trees right here and some additional landscaping. But as you can see, this does not look anything like the, what would traditionally be called the service area of a large building of this type. I wonder if we could just look at the side views, too?
Yeah.
Troy, please. Okay. So this is, I believe this is our west view. So again, we've taken a lot of care to introduce some cultured stone columns, and I have samples of this stone up here. There's two different types of stone that we're utilizing. One is a stack stone, the other one is a larger stone with a little more variation of color, but they're all in part of the same color palette. Similarly with the brick, we've used two different types of C-brick that are larger bricks that really suit, are well-suited to the scale of this building. Some of the areas of the building are 30, 33, 34 feet high, and the front architectural feature over the marquees approximately 39 or 40 feet in height. So it's a very large building, a lot of square foot of surface, and we've introduced these stone features, cultured stone features, in a number of areas that really dress the building up and I think make it a very handsome building. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Larry, and see if there's any questions.
All right. Typically, what we've done in these situations on a site plan review is we'll go through the planning staff's letter. You may have it there. If not, Troy, you've got it. We'll probably be deferring to you a lot for some detail, but we have the letter dated January 5th. If the commissioners grab that letter, looking in the bottom left, or bottom right-hand corner, I suggest we start on the site plan review versus the PD amendment first. So if we go to, on the bottom right-hand corner, packet page 13, you'll see about two-thirds of the way down, we'll get into this actual site plan review. So the first page or so, flipping to the second page of that is just background information on the project itself, and we've heard what Troy had to say and what the applicant has added. Impact assessment, there's no separate impact assessment. The theater was permitted in this particular development as part of the foresight of the Ramco group. Traffic generation, for those that are concerned with that, there is no additional traffic study necessary. The theater was a possibility, and in this particular development, along with the one on the south side, for the benefit of everybody here, if you didn't know, there was extensive, extensive, extensive traffic studies work. And I will say, a very extensive contribution for paying for all your roadwork out there on M-59, Heartland Road, Clark Road, many of the improvements, all of those were paid for by Ramco and the developer on the south. So all of the project that was put in there 10 years ago was designed and built, approved by MDOT, approved by Livingston County, and approved by the township, but courtesy of them in exchange for one of the buildings and uses they're proposing today. So we've covered the traffic issue for years, and we'll be all set on that. There is a future land division, as Troy had mentioned. Ultimately, the Imagine Group will own a particular piece of this development, but they'll follow the same rules that everyone else in this project follows. So I guess we'll move to page 15, which is where we really get into some of the discussion of things. Dimensional requirements. Troy, you're just noting that there is no minimum lot size?
That's right, yeah. This, the minimum lot size for a PD itself is 20 acres, but for an individual parcel in the PD, the PD does not designate a minimum lot size or a minimum amount of frontage. And basically, this parcel, although it doesn't exist now, would be seven and a half acres and would contain, I don't know, 1,100 feet of frontage on one street and 700 some odd feet on another street, so.
So they're covering.
Yeah.
Building setbacks be the next comment. It looks as though everything is fine on building setbacks, but you have comment on the right of way, just for the benefit of everyone in the room?
Yeah. Maybe what I'll do is go back to the original plan. This was the plan that was, that essentially established what the setbacks are. And so this line for Heartland Road is the line that was used to determine the setback. You can see on that plan, it says right here what the setback requirement is, 75-foot setback. When the development actually came, and this road got developed, there's a line here on this highway easement that comes over in this area. I'll just try to zoom in a little bit. So this line would be the same one, this dark line that you see would be the same line that was part of the original approval, but they did increase, there's additional highway easement here, just wanted to make a note of it. This building is actually further back than what was approved back in 2008. So this, that's the plan that establishes the, what the zoning setbacks are. The unique thing about a planned development is you can kind of take the existing zoning ordinances and tweak them or modify them for that plan, which is what happened here. So just wanted to make a note of that so you were aware of it. And this building meets not only the setback from Heartland Road, it also meets it from Heartland Square Drive as well.
So we're fine there. Parking lot, driveway, internal road setbacks, looks like everything's fine?
Yeah.
You're good with all that? Now moving over to packet page number 16. Building height, maximum 35 feet. They are 35 feet. The entrance feature, or the front entry feature is a little taller, but I think we've got some leeway on that.
Yeah, they are requesting, if you, this is their front entrance right here, and they have this architectural feature that extends up, so if you go to the very top of that, I think it's 40 feet. And so they have requested a waiver as part of their request, and I think you have a copy of their letter in there. So that's a decision that the Planning Commission will have to make as part of this approval.
Any thoughts on that? Commissioners, anybody? You fine with it?
Yeah, personally, I view it as an architectural feature. I don't think that...
And it's not the building, isn't that tall? It's just something very small. Okay.
I'm fine with it.
You're fine? All right, so we're good with that? Lot coverage, no comments on that. Site requirements, off-street parking, looks like they're meeting all the parking requirements in terms of number of spaces. Could you take just a second and share with us the additional parking that they are providing onto the remaining Ramco piece to the north?
Yeah. So I think what I'll do is go to a different plan here. You would think I would eventually get, be real quick and smooth at this, but, so this is the site plan, and this line, I don't know if that's showing up, would be the limits of the land for Imagine Theater. And then beyond that, you can see some additional parking up in this area. I think it's 75 spaces that they're showing to be available for Imagine Theater. But even if you got rid of all 75 of those spaces, they have enough parking just on the Imagine Theater site.
Yeah, and I think they added that due to a conversation we had in our informal, and that is that every drive aisle for the parking lot needed to turn around, you need to get the cars around it, and when we started getting into that, it didn't make sense. So Ramco and Imagine got together and have concluded this is the best way to solve it. So we've got a few extra spaces until we get a couple of buildings to the north.
Will that be utilized as a shared parking in the future? Do we know?
I believe so.
Yeah. It is, it's part of our reciprocal easement agreement.
Yep.
Barrier-free parking, looks like we're good. Just to comment on the loading space, Troy?
Yeah, there, there's an area, it's not specifically identified on the plan, but in this area in the back of the building, this area would certainly meet the loading space requirement. Loading spaces are a little bit, I don't want to say tricky, but you can't always predict when the truck is going to show up and where the guy driving the truck is actually going to park to take product into the, so sometimes when you're doing a loading space, you're just showing it on a site plan, that doesn't always mean that's where the truck will park every single time. But there certainly is adequate space here on this site plan to comply with that.
And I would imagine those deliveries are not during peak movie times anyways. So next up, I'm on page 17, dumpster enclosure. As Michael mentioned, they've incorporated that into the back of the building, so from the standpoint of coming up on the facility from Heartland Road, Heartland Square Drive, it's an integrated part of the building.
The goal is to have the dumpster enclosure be built of materials that match the building. Well, in this case, it's right, almost attached to the building. You'd have a hard time even seeing it, so.
I know we have a revised lighting plan, and I see we got another letter today.
Yep. There were a couple of areas on the lighting plan, and just in case you're wondering what a lighting plan looks like, there's a lighting plan. Doesn't this look like, it'd be fun to read. And basically, a lighting plan just has, it shows the light fixtures, if you will, the light poles, and then it gives a reading as to how many foot candles or lumens or whatever your measuring stick is, it gives a reading as to what that is. And the lighting plan they originally provided did not include the wall-mounted lights, so they provided an updated lighting plan, which you had. But there were a couple areas that did not comply. They were just slightly over the permitted light levels, and so they had a couple of choices. They could request a waiver of that, which they've done, or they could modify the lighting plan so that it does comply. So today, he's provided us a copy of a lighting plan. It appears as though that lighting plan complies, however, we just haven't had enough time to really look at it in detail. I don't think staff has any concerns with either the waiver or if the, if the Planning Commission wanted to approve it with a condition that staff is, can verify that the lighting plan complies. I think so. complies, I think staff is comfortable with that as well, so.
Okay, so, you would note that for later in the meeting. Any questions on lighting? Comments on lighting?
I'd just say, I'd prefer that they comply with the standard, and if the revised plan does that, that's the way I would lean.
Okay.
So, just when we get to a motion at the end, we'll include that. Any other questions, comments on lighting? Okay, moving to packet page 18, landscaping. Troy, would you like to give us a little bit more of detail?
Yeah, the landscaping comments are probably going to be the bulk of a staff report, so what I'm going to do is just try to give a cursory overview of landscaping. There, the PD requirement, and then in conjunction with the zoning ordinance, requires a certain amount of trees and shrubs to be installed on the site, and it specifies specific areas where they have to have it. And the perimeter area, which would be kind of in between the parking lot and the road, going almost all the way around the site, is an area where they have enough trees, but they were short on some of the shrubs, so that's one of the areas they're requesting a waiver, and the staff report outlines it in detail for you. The other requirements on the parking lot landscape, you can see there's some landscape islands in the parking lot. These northernmost ones, they're just showing to have a grass, if you will, in the landscape And then, they are also proposing to use some trees, I think on page 20, at the bottom is a list of trees and shrubs that aren't specifically identified in the pattern book as part of the PD. We've looked those over and don't have any concerns with those trees or shrubs, they're fairly consistent with the pattern book and the trees and the shrubs that were listed in there. And with that, I'll just leave it open for a specific discussion on that. They're asking for a waiver on the number of shrubs on the site, and in some cases, some trees, but this is the general landscape plan. If you've got questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
Looks like they have a higher than required, required amount of deciduous and ornamental trees, and they're just short on shrubs, correct?
Yep.
All right, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that right?
Yeah. Sue?
All righty. So, I'm a landscape architect, so of course I focus in on this, I'm just letting you know. But first off, I really think the plan looks wonderful, and I think a lot of the decisions on where to, like Keith was saying, have more trees, and, you know, the shrub decision, where could you put them and where not, was really well done. But I just have a couple places that I thought maybe we can kind of beg from one area and add to another. So, with that, the area, and I drove it again tonight, that I feel, you know, that is the consistent thread of the whole development, is the Hartland Road. That's a big connector through the community, through the town, and that has a standard where you're keeping the berms, you've got ample trees, but you're lacking on the shrubs. I don't think you need all the shrubs that is, you know, that they want, but the thing is, when you drive up and down that road, it's got to have this continuous look, and without any shrubs, other than at your entrances, it's going to read different than that main spine, so I'm suggesting that maybe there could be some more shrubs along there, just to keep that continuous look along that road. Within the parking lot, you know, there was, there's also, you're looking for a relief of so many shrubs in the islands, I think you made a great call. You've got them along the building frontage, so when we're looking out at the lot, they'll screen all the large, you know, expansive pavement, and out within the lot, you've got the sodded, you know, which will be easy to maintain, you've got it all irrigated, so I feel that's fine. Out along Hartland Square Road, you've just, you know, there really isn't any set landscaping along there right now, you've got an amp, you've got a nice berm. One of our requirements, and that wasn't brought up, I don't think yet that it was brought up in the report, so on Hartland Road, somewhere it says, Hartland Square Road, they should have a three-foot height evergreen edge, but you've got a pretty darn good berm where it's almost three foot the whole length, but where it's not, then I think, you know, we should add something just to screen the parking lot. That's the big idea throughout a whole community, so maybe there's something you can work with grades or something, put a retaining wall, look at shrubs, if that's the cheaper way. But just in those few areas that it's noted, where it's two and a half foot height, maybe you could increase that. So, at least we're screened, not calling for a lot of shrubs, I'm just trying to achieve that screening. So, let's see if there's anything else.
Sue, can I just increase the height in all the areas that are short and accomplish the same thing on Hartland Square?
Yes, they could do it, if they could do that, that's exactly right. Now, I'm going to get a little bit into detail about the berm, and you guys can decide how you want to approach it. The language for the berm slope says one-on-three max in our ordinance. Our ordinance talks about berms also, we've got kind of a profile of what we want, and it talks about a one-on-four max with kind of a, more of a gentle top, so it doesn't peak, about a four-foot kind of a crest. So, we don't have grading per se, you know, exactly shown how you're going to achieve it, but I do want to note that they're noting that the berm's going to be a little steeper, you know, which in many places, you can mow a one-on-three slope, that's about it, otherwise you're tipping, but I mean, it is maintainable, but I do want to bring it up to you guys. And in our ordinance, it talks about a berm slope at one-on-four, a little, you know, more gentle-
Right.
-with a crest. So, again, I think, you know, let's talk about how you can achieve it, but I think the big idea is, can you achieve it with grading? What can you do, or where you fall short? Could you add something, just so we can get the screening on Hartland Town Square Road?
Well, our, Fileno Pasquale is here, our landscape architect, so I'm sure he's taking notes.
Okay, that's all my comments, trying to work with you guys.
Yeah, you're welcome to come up. Why don't you introduce yourself and...
My name is Fileno Pasquale, I'm the landscape architect. So, in regard to your comment, I think we'll probably consult with the engineers and see where we're at with the berms, if that can be accomplished, in terms of increasing it to at least a minimum of three and a half. And wherever we fall deficient, we'll revisit that and maybe complement it, as you suggested, to provide some additional, you know, shrubs and shrubbery, and maybe even some of those under store, you know, some of the canopy trees, maybe locate some of those, you know, additional, you know, shrub plantings there, to kind of accomplish what the township is looking for. So, definitely, we can work with the township to resolve that, I don't think that would be, you know...
Sounds great. Thank you.
Sue, would that be something you would be comfortable with our staff reviewing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think it's pretty clear, you know?
All right, so not significant changes?
No, just trying to, you know, go for the big stroke and the intent of the ordinance, and also realize that you have a hardship, as you said, of 1,800 millineal feet.
Yeah, I've been doing this now 14 years, I don't know if we've had two sites combined that have as much road frontage as you have, so I think I recognize your hardship also.
We appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments on landscaping? You'll need to make a note for the end of the meeting. All right, we have moved through page 18, 19, 20, oh, we are on page 21 already. Architecture, Troy, can you help us out a little bit?
Yeah. Let's see here. So, I'll just pick the front elevation, if I can, here. I'll zoom in. The, the planned development requires, or outlines, what are acceptable building materials, and then outlines the percent that the building has to have of those materials. And, maybe what I'll do is just go to the, show on the staff report, and just kind of show, there's a little chart we did in the staff report, so maybe it'll just be clear just to show that. The, so this is the chart that you all have in the staff report, and basically, the top category is brick, natural clay, 100% would be the max, 40% would be the minimum, and then you can see the percentages that they have proposed. So, this is an area that they do not comply, they are seeking a waiver for on that, and then the next category is what's called this C-brick, and I think that's commonly referred to as, as quick brick, and that's a product that's not listed as an approved building material in the, in this PD, and here's the percentages that they are showing. So, that's the second part of their waiver. The rest of the stuff all complies, so if you were to look at the rest of their building materials here, with the, with the stone and the split face, that all complies, but it's the lacking of natural clay brick, and then the C-brick or quick brick that is a new material that they're proposing, and that one doesn't comply, so that's the waiver part of their request.
All right, well, I'll jump in on this one and say that I totally support the building materials that they are proposing on this facility. For the public, for everybody here, we don't see many buildings in this township that are basically forefronts. I don't think when this plan was even devised, and I was part of the approval of that, we envisioned forefronts. I think the applicant's done a phenomenal job on taking a building in a very central, visible location, and giving us four very attractive sides to the facility itself, and I don't view it as a compromise. The brick in nature is larger in scale, this is a larger building. They've addressed in their waiver request some of the acoustic benefits to having this type of construction, and I think the, that we should accept the waiver based upon the very attractive-looking building they've put forward. So, I don't know, is that pretty clear?
Yeah.
So, any other support, any other comments?
I support the architecture, I think it looks great. Can you just explain the difference between the two bricks here? What's the difference between the quick brick and the natural brick?
I think probably the, the best way that I understand it is that this, this brick, it actually forms the wall of the building. It's of a size and a material that we can actually, it's called single waith, so that we can actually build the exterior of the building out of this without having to go back and add another brick over block, for example.
So, it's structural?
Yeah, so it's actually structural, so that's, that's one great advantage, plus the variety of finishes that we can put on the brick and the colors and so on.
Is it like a cast-in-place, or is it stacked?
No, it's, it's laid one at a time.
Okay.
And it's the same product, I don't know that it's the same brand that was used on the previous Walmart facility, now the Rural King facility. So, we have this product in the community already.
I would support it, though.
Yeah, I, the average person, if you weren't sitting here, or were in the brick business, would drive by it and probably not know the difference, and it's laid up like brick individually.
I have a question, is it concrete or is it clay? Is it concrete?
Mm-hmm, it's concrete.
Concrete, right, for structural? Okay.
What's the dimensions on that, on the block, do you know?
Let's see what we...
That's it right there.
Size 16 inches wide?
Yeah, four by 16.
Half a block.
I think for the size of the building, it's a better choice, it's, it looks better.
I agree. Any other questions on architecture?
So, no, just a, just a comment, so I agree with Larry and Jeff, and I think everyone on the panel, that it's a very attractive-looking building, and I think you've done a great job on such large expanses, and how do we break it up? How do you break it up with materials, colors, pillars? And I for sure support the fact that it doesn't meet the requirement of the clay, so it's a very good-looking building, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mm-hmm, and we'll need to make note of that for the end of the meeting, too, the architectural waiver. We're on page 23, pedestrian access, they're meeting those requirements, and now we are to the Hartland DPW letter, the engineer letter, and the fire marshal letters. Any comments on those, agree with those? Or good? Yeah, I think it's pretty standard stuff. Why don't we jump back now, we'll do motions at the end, why don't we jump back to the beginning of the letter now, the review letter, which would be packet page 11, and talk about the PD amendment? As Troy had mentioned, there's, there are guidelines for this development, and we were capable, we were able and permitted to deal with all the issues that we've dealt with so far, there is one remaining that we need to talk about, and that would be the signs. So, what is the, the site plan that we just reviewed is approved here, and could you refresh for everybody the process now that this conversation is going to take place?
So, the PD agreement, which outlines what the sign regulations are, and then the pattern book is, as well, outlines what the sign regulation, there is no waiver provision for that part of it. So, the Planning Commission's authority is essentially approve it in compliance with those PD requirements, or not approve that portion of the, the site. Generally, the Planning Commission would defer sign parts to be an administrative part that staff would handle, may call out certain aspects of signage, or other aspects of signs that they would like to see changed, but in this case, the, the applicants are proposing to increase the, the signs on this building, and due to the location of the building being almost surrounded with roadway, felt it's important that this building have some signage, even on backsides of the building, all of that leads to A, more signs, and B, more sign area than is permitted in the PD agreement. So, as you can see, they have their Imagine, over the front of the building, they have some E's that are part of their, almost a part of just their building design, and then, of course, in the corners here, and then over here, they're identifying the E, and then, this is a particular type of theater, I'm not any theater expert or anything, but this particular E-max represents a different theater experience than the other theaters that would be in this building, and they felt that's important to identify that particular theater experience. Nonetheless, probably the staff report chart, page 12, might show you what we're, what the actual amendment entails. You can see the, this is the language that would be amended. This language, which would become a new section, 6.6, 0.3, 0.3, outlines the language, and what they're doing is, when they amend the, the signage, their goal is not to allow everybody additional signage, they're signifying that there's unique issues and problems with this location that other tenants won't have, and therefore shouldn't enjoy additional signage, so they've established some criteria based on the size of this building, being a major tenant, that they should be allowed some additional signs, and then B, the fact that they're almost in an island surrounded by roadway on three sides, and then the front part of their building facing an interior parking lot, those are kind of some of the criteria they're establishing in this PD, in order to enjoy the benefit of the additional signage, you must have those elements. And then, the, the chart, I've kind of shown, here's what, what they would be permitted ordinarily, two-wall signs, 75-square... two-wall signs, seventy-five square feet each. And then here is what they are proposed to have. And then in this center column is essentially what, with the amendment, what they would be permitted to have. And that's something the planning commission will have to discuss and forward a recommendation onto the township board.
And we had two informal meetings. Our site plan review committee, Keith and I, and staff with the applicant, and went through the site plan, as I said, several times. And it's very apparent, as one of the voters on the original PD agreement, that we had never anticipated a tenant with a forefront building. And so we encouraged them with the enhancement of the architecture of the facility that they were putting up there and the location within the development to bring forward their sign proposal. Many of the signs on this building are what I would call backlit. They're not channel-type letters. The EMAX is an example, and all the Es are, there's just a glow coming from behind them. So they're not the typical type lettering that the imagine would be, you know? They're not lit up in the same way. So all those Es on there, and off to the left, the EMAX are, it's more of a glow.
Correct.
So we encourage them to put together the sign proposal and work with Ramco and staff to put together some language that would justify their proposal, and so now it's here before us. Any comments on it?
So the elevations that we're looking at today includes the signage that you're proposing?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
I don't think it looks overdone at all. And particularly, and for future people, future businesses that come to town, I think that's part of what we explained, because we are fair to everybody. But this is a unique case. We do not have another parcel in this township that has a forefront exposure. And if you take a look at each side as an individual, nothing is garish or overdone. And we always allow a front-entry feature.
Is there a marquee?
It has that timeless look to it. I think they point out, it almost looks old-fashioned but contemporary.
Yeah, kind of art deco, but...
But there is no letters or changing or anything of that nature, no. But yeah, it has a little bit of that look to it, too.
So there is, I don't mean to overlook, there's another part to the PD amendment. It's not outlined in the staff report. It somewhat got added in a little later. It is part of the language that I handed out tonight that the attorney has accepted. The applicants have essentially asked to limit who can come forward with PD amendments in the future. They don't want to have every, and maybe they should speak on this a little better than I can, but it's my understanding, they didn't want to have every tenant be able to come in and amend the PD down the road. And so they wanted to put some limitations on how that could be done. And our attorney is fine with that language, so...
Well, and I would agree with that, and I would agree with the applicant. The other is that I wouldn't expect any other applicant to be able to come up with a justification for, in this case, something of this nature. And I think that's what makes this so unique. And I think I could sit and have a conversation with any future applicant on why their signed package is X and this facility's signed package is Y. And I think that's important, that it is based upon some data, it's based on fact. So any other questions on the signs? Comments?
So I would have a comment, and that is, when I stand back and look at the building, I don't feel that, I feel your signs are in proportion. I know that there's an overage, you know, in the signs relative to the ordinance, but I think it looks appropriate. I don't think, you know, their walls are huge. These are big expanses. So I think that if the signs were smaller, then it might look like they were smaller. So I support the percentages of the sign on the different frontages. Just making a comment.
Okay. Anything else? Troy, I think, have we covered everything?
Yep.
Okay. So now if the commissioners would take note, we have two motions to make this evening. One is for approval of the Imagine Theater site plan. And that was the first topic we talked about. And then the second item is going to be a recommendation of approval for the PD amendment changes, which are the topic Troy brought up in regards to future amendments, who can make them, and the signs. So I think it's probably appropriate that we would address the site plan first. And there is a motion on the bottom of packet page number twenty-three, if someone is so inclined.
Okay. Planning Commission has determined the proposed amendments to the wall sign standards...
You need page twenty-three. There you go.
Oh, you wanted that one first.
That one, site plan first.
Okay.
Kind of gives it away, doesn't it?
Planning Department recommends the Planning Commission approve site plan application five forty-four, request amend the previously approved plan for Heartland Town Square plan development.
Oh, here you go. Yeah. You're good.
Okay. To construct an approximate sixty-four thousand, six hundred square feet Imagine Theater, including approval of the landscape, architectural, and lighting waiver requests with the following conditions. The applicant shall adequately address the outstanding items noted in the Planning Department's memorandum dated January fifth, two thousand seventeen, under construction plan set, subject to an administrative review by the planning staff prior to the issuance of a land use permit. Two, applicant complies with any requirement of the Department of Public Works, Director Township Engineering Consultant in Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority Fire Marshal. Well, that was landscaping waiver. And the recommendations from the commissioner night for the modification of the landscaping shrubs for screening.
Do we have to mention about the lighting that we're going to let?
It says lighting waiver.
Yeah, we're not going with the waiver.
Jeff has requested they comply.
Do we know if it's close? Support?
Yeah. All right. So we have a motion from Commissioner Voight, a second from Commissioner Mitchell for approval of site plan application number five forty-four with the conditions that were stated. Any other further comments, questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Congratulations. And now the second one. We need a motion for the amendment. That would be on page twenty-four.
I got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
All right.
Tried this once.
I know you did.
I would recommend approval of site plan application number four thirty-nine A to amend the wall sign standard for the Heartland Town Square plan development as a sixth amendment to the Heartland Ramco Plan Development Agreement and Heartland Town Square Pattern Book based on the following findings. The Planning Commission has determined the proposal amendments to the wall sign standards accommodates a major tenant in an area within the Heartland Town Square plan development where a major tenant was not otherwise originally planned and may not have located. The Planning Commission has determined that the amended sign standards offer flexibility for a major tenant building when located on three road frontages within the PD. The Planning Commission has determined that the proposed major tenant would be benefit to this PD as well as the township. Approval of the PD amendment language shall be subject to the approval of the township attorney. Attachments?
We don't need that.
We don't need that, that's all.
Actually, the attorney, really?
Yeah, he already approved it, so...
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend approval of site plan application four thirty-nine A, which is the sixth PD amendment from Commissioner Voight, second from Commissioner Newsom. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for considering Heartland.
Believe me, thank you all for your assistance and guidance through this process.
Well, we appreciate it, and we look forward to watching a movie soon.
We look forward to bringing it to you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Reclining chair.
I think we have a lot of students here who probably need agendas signed, so maybe we'll take a couple-minute break. If you guys want to come forward, we can sign those for you, then we'll get on to some of our housekeeping business.
How are you?
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Popular meeting, huh?
Welcome, thanks for coming. Can do a good one.
Hello.
You're really keen for beer.
I'm one of the little guys.
Hi.
There you go. Thank you.
Wow. Everything's due, is this the last day?
Oh, I thought you just wanted to come and see us.
Thanks.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Here you go.
There you go. You're welcome. Thank you. We'll let them get out. Give them a go.
None of us want to see you. We're so grateful for you. I'm like...
I know, I used to be that way, too.
Now you're like, what the heck?
Every day, I do. So I don't talk very great.
I got a little confused on the person who said you used to approve, and it was written differently. I was like, here!
He has a son who's senior, I think. Do you have a senior this year? Do I watch? Do you have a senior?
No, I'm back in the starting line. I have four in power.
Awesome.
At one time.
We asked for it.
One came with the mayor. Oh, wait. One in power.
Ann came with a gorgeous...
Took the family to the one in Novi. Well, I don't think it's as nice as this one. It didn't have the, I'll call it lazy boy recliner seats. It just had the regular seats, but... I went to a kids' movie, and I've got kids, so I can't remember what the name of the movie was. I'm afraid with the lazy boy recliners, I could be paying to sleep in there.
All right, I think we'll get our meeting rolling again, if you guys are good with that. Just a little housekeeping to do here. So we're on item nine A. We have our twenty-seventeen Planning Commission meeting schedule. Since we didn't meet at the end of the year, we never had an opportunity to approve it. So if you are so inclined to agree with it, I think Troy didn't staff take the holidays at the end of the year into consideration and shift the meetings to the first and third instead of the second and the fourth, we would need a motion to accept the calendar.
Who to approve the calendar?
Support it.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Colani, second from Commissioner Grissom. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. If we need to go to item nine C first, election of our officers to the Planning Commission.
Do you have to have a nomination? Yeah. Nominee to sleep?
Yeah, I don't know if there's anybody running.
I make a motion that we carry over the existing officers that we currently have, as well as if they accept the positions.
Okay. Thank you. Second?
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Murphy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, I think. Depends on what meeting it is. Then we'll move to item nine B, which is the election, or it's not, it's, they're just committee appointments. It doesn't take a motion, but I'm going to reappoint Sue Grissom, Tom Murphy, and Commissioner Voight to our ordinance review committee. I think we have Mike Mitchell on the ZBA. And then myself and Keith will just stay on the site plan review committee, if everybody's good with that. We'll just keep everything going the way it's been. Next up, item D, Planning Commission bylaws. If you recall, our bylaws state that they should be looked at or reaffirmed every year. We haven't made a lot of changes to them in many years. We pretty much operate to the way that they are written. If you've had a chance to read them, if there's any suggested changes, we could take a look at it in the future. If you like the way the place is running right now, you probably want to just reaffirm what we have here.
Do we need a motion?
Yep.
Make that motion.
Okay.
Support.
We have a motion to reaffirm our Planning Commission bylaws from Commissioner Colani, second from Commissioner Newsom. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item ten, call to the public. Anyone this evening? Please come forward.
Hi, good evening. I'm sorry I got here right at seven, but I think I missed the first call, so...
Oh, you're good.
My name is Kate DeRozier, and I live at Wood Cliff North Condominiums. I'm an owner there and resident. And I'm at ten-four eight-four in North Valley Court, just right off Heartland Road. So as a resident there, and I moved here in two thousand and ten, so I wasn't here at the time that you did this very thorough review the first time through, so I wasn't privy to that. It's exciting to see money certainly, and a good tax base move in. I just had a couple of questions that I hope, and maybe this is not the venue to bring them up, maybe I should take it to the township meeting. Living off Heartland Road, I am really, really concerned about the traffic beyond Town Square going right into the Village. And I'm not sure how much the theater might contribute to that additional traffic. So I'm concerned about that, because it's a very tight road right now as it is, and there are no walkways. So I'll bring this discussion up with the township board, because I think there needs to be a place for people to safely ride bikes and walk. And there are kids not that far from where this development is going to be. So I'm concerned about public safety, the speed on the road, and how many, you know, driveways or roads come right in on Heartland between Dunham Road and Town Square. You know, they've got three condo developments with exits and entrances, and you've got the church, and then you've got individual properties just north of Wood Cliff North, up until Dunham. So there is some current concerns, some serious concerns about public safety on the road there, and how the school bus is going to navigate and all of that with the theater. So I'm worried on a safety standpoint. And I'm really kind of curious, and I love that there is care taken for the landscaping and the berms and all of that. So that's great. But I'm concerned about the light that will be projected, and is it going to be twenty-four seven on the property? You know, we've lost so much of a dark sky, we don't really have one anymore because the Meyer lights are so bright. And so there's that concern as well. I just had to put in my two cents, because I'm concerned about, you know, the small-town feeling that I think I've gathered from talking to a lot of people is so, so important. I, you know, I appreciate your work, I appreciate the care that you put into this, and thank you for letting me put in my questions and concerns.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just, since you weren't here when this was originally approved, don't typically answer you at the meeting, but it looks, we don't have much crowd here this evening. So, I'll do this real briefly. When that development was originally proposed, all of the traffic studies were done, traffic counts were done to the north and on Heartland Road as they were on 59 and all of those. So, traffic was taken into consideration when that development isn't even built out. So, they have approved for over a half a million square feet there of commercial space. And Myers is under 200,000, and this is 64, so you're about halfway with those two buildings. So, there's going to be more to come, but it wasn't done blindly. And I want you to be reassured that traffic was a great detail that went into the approval of that project and the project on the south. And the road improvements, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, were all done based upon traffic studies, and the road improvements themselves were paid for by those, both of those property owners. In regards to the lighting, we have some of the strictest lighting standards around in regards to how much lighting we allow. Our light pollution on the ground doesn't go typically beyond the property line. You can do all you want, believe me, I'm a dark-sky kind of person, but that light bounces off the pavement, and there's nothing you can do about it. And we have to deal with public safety issues. And if the public isn't out there at that point, you know, if the store is closed, we still have to have some lights on for security reasons. So, lighting unfortunately, while dialed down compared to many communities, is still something that we're going to have, no matter how much we grow. But we do care very much about the small-town feeling, but we also know that we're growing, and hopefully, we've put in place a good plan that will do it in the best way possible. All right? But you're welcome. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Come.
Are there any other proposed developments in this town square area?
Not, there are no applications yet at this time. So, until somebody comes forward and puts an application forward, no. But know that that property has, oh, 15 or 16 outlots. An outlot would be like a Taco Bell. So, we can take Taco Bell, we can take Bel Tire, and Tim Hortons, and that's three. So, if there are 15 more, there are 12 more coming. And there are restrictions on what can go in there in terms of drive-throughs or banks or those types of things that the developer worked out with the township. So, you're going to see more of that. And Troy, you have the complete plan. That large parcel of land between the highway and Myers up there, on the current plan right now, to the north of it, or immediately west of Myers, is a larger building, again, probably theater size, and then I believe on the approved plan is a hotel. Now, it doesn't mean they aren't going to come and change it, they just asked to put a theater in a location on the site that it wasn't originally sought to be. Okay?
One last question. Does there anything in books now planned for Clyde Road, 23 intersection there?
You have no applications for anything, do you?
Because that one for that sports complex is off the books, right? Because I remember that, they were talking about a school or something up there.
The school owns property, how far down Clyde? Mile and a half?
About a mile.
About a mile down Clyde Road, not at that corner, though.
Right where Partial Road, Partial Road comes into Clyde.
Heartland Schools does have a piece of property there, but they have not proposed any facilities.
And that's not Clyde Road?
It's on the south side of Clyde Road, about a mile and a half west of 23.
Part of it, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anyone else? All right. We'll close Call to the Public. Troy, what do you have for us tonight?
Just a couple items under Planners' Report. Here's my little agenda. So, I wanted to let everyone know that the Ordinance Review Committee did hold a meeting Monday, January 9. We took a look at a list of potential ordinance amendments. We briefly discussed just generally what the topics were of those. Many of those items are items I brought in front of you here at the Planning Commission before we set up to call the Ordinance Review Committee together. And the goal now is to put those into a priority as to which ones we'll tackle. And the Planning Commissioners have responded to me as to their priority, and then we'll probably start to move forward with some of that. And I'll, we'll come back to the Planning Commission and kind of get input from them as well. So, just to give you an update, that we did meet, we've looked at the list of ordinances. I think we're generally looking at maybe meeting twice a month. That's quite a big list, and that's where we're at with the Ordinance Review Committee. Secondly, the Planning Department has adopted an entirely new numbering system for land use permits, sign permits, site plans, and so forth. And I think we talked about that at the end of the year, that, what, just to refresh your memory, with land use permits, we were up around nine, the number 9,900 and something. And that was triggering us to add a new digit to land use permits. We had to make sure that the computer software program we had could accommodate that. And that also questioned, well, if we're going to make changes, why don't we go to more of a year-based number system? And if we're going to change it for land use permits, why not change it for everything? So, in the future, you're going to start to see applications coming to you with the year in front of it, and then kind of a dash number. So, that way, when you see a site plan and it's 17-5, you'll know generally what year that was brought before the Planning Commission, as opposed to Site Plan Number 544, you would have no idea what year that was unless you were real good at figuring out numbers. So, lastly, just a real brief update on Newberry Mixed Use. This is a fairly large mixed-use project on M-59 and Pleasant Valley Road. This project has gone through the conceptual phase, it's now in the preliminary review. There's been some initial review by the Planning Commission. They're out amending their plans and working with MDOT and the Road Commission. We just received some comments from the MDOT on this. It looks like there's some minor tweaking on the site plan, so to speak, but it looks like they're fairly close with wrapping things up with MDOT. I would anticipate here in the near future, they'll make their changes to the site plan. They may want to meet with the Site Plan Review Committee to kind of gauge where they're at, but I would anticipate this will be coming up back to the Planning Commission in the near future. And that's it.
Okay. On to Committee Reports. Comments? Anyone? No? We need a motion to adjourn.
So, move? Support?
So, we have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Newsom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, motion carries. Thank you.